Aloha, I'm Asia Iyer. Thank you for joining us for another Maui Pono Network Canada interview for the 2024 election. And just a reminder, Maui Pono Network is a local political action committee and we are dedicated to pono government through community actions. So we're all about getting you informed, letting you know what the things are that are being discussed with candidates, their strong viewpoints on the issues and just how they feel about this election going into it. Hopefully you've joined us for past election interviews. We've been doing it for a number of years and we really look forward to it. We have a lot of volunteers, all of the interviewers here are volunteers. Spend a lot of hours getting these prepared for you, the voters out there in Maui County. You can always check the website to see the other interviews from the other candidates. And you can see that on Facebook, YouTube, or on our website, maiponanetwork.org. And again, I'm Asia Iyer. Tonight, we have a great candidate. It's Kelly King. You're probably familiar with her. We love interviewing her. We've been able to interview her through a couple of election cycles. We would like to start off just inviting Kelly to introduce herself, talk a little bit about why she's running, and just let us know where you're from and a little of your history.
Well, aloha and thank you to the Pono Network for continuing your great work. I run into people all the time who look forward to receiving your recommendation cards in the mail or during your handout events. And I'm thrilled to be here. I'm excited to, you know, I wasn't, I took a two-year break from the county council, as most people know, after the end of my previous term. And I've just been watching a very conservative contractor-funded council really be handing a lot of our local resources or trying to hand over our local resources to outside interests. We need to get back to the People's Council. And I really miss having that. I miss being on the council when we were being responsive to testifiers. Even if we didn't always agree with them, we showed that we cared about what they thought and we asked questions of everybody to find out more information. So my background, to give you a little bit, for those who don't know me, to give you a little bit of information about my experience. I started in public service, elected public service when I served on the State Board of Education back in the late 1990s and swore I'd never run for political office again. But I was cajoled into running for county council back in 2016 when we had some big development issues in South Maui that our then council member was not addressing with our local citizens. And so I did let myself get talked into it. I told the people who asked me to run that if I did get in, I would probably stay for three terms and then matriculate out. And I did stay for three terms. And I'm really excited that I got a lot of stuff done. I have a background in renewable energy. My husband and I ran a generator business for many, many years. It still exists today under different ownership. I have a background in nonprofits and serving on Maui Hui Malama Learning Center. I've served on some environmental organizations. I've served on, I'm currently serving on Ikle USA, the USA Secretariat Office of the global organization that's addressing climate action through 24 secretariat offices. So I'm also involved from the global level all the way down to the county level with climate action. And we were able to address a lot of local legislation advancing climate action in my last two years on the council when I chaired the Climate Action Resilience and Environment Committee. I also have a background in children's issues because I spent a lot of time even before getting on the Board of Education, leading efforts to build playgrounds on the island when my kids were little, tracking what was happening in the school system and with the curriculum. I was able, I was instrumental on the State Board of Education in bringing new ideas onto the board, such as having our curriculum aligned. And it doesn't, it doesn't seem like a real, a real hard thing to do, but it's hard to get the State Board of Education all on board with, you know, the teachers aligning their curriculum across one grade and then from one grade to the next. So that was a real breakthrough for our State Department of Education. And, you know, I've just, I've been involved in affordable housing through my work on the council and getting affordable rentals into South Maui. I think three other projects that got started while I was on the council that I helped really sincere developers. And when people say developers are not going to build affordable housing unless they can make a lot of money on the high end, that's just not true. There are some really good developers on this island who really care about our people and that's inspired me. So that's a little bit about my interest and why I want to get back on the board. I'm still involved in the company. My husband and I run Pacific Bio Diesel. And we've started a big biofuel crop on Kauai now with some federal funding from, through Senator Mazie Hirono's office. And our whole focus is on the circular economy, getting, right now, we're growing sunflowers, but we're, you know, growing crops for food and fuel and processing those locally, providing them to our local residents in the state of Hawaii and taking the waste back from the cooking oil and making it back into biodiesel. So I'm really proud of the fact that we've remained community-based for 30 years. Next year will be our 30-year, 30th year in biodiesel and that we've always stayed focused on doing what we could for our community, bringing the best benefits as far as jobs, revenue, energy security, and now we're working on food security. So that's a little bit about myself and my background. Personally, I have two grown children who are both very successful. I have two grandchildren. They're on the Big Island with our daughter-in-law. And Bob and I just celebrated our 40th anniversary last year. So we have a sustainable marriage as well.
Congratulations.
Well, Kelly, thank you so much again for running and for putting your hat in the circle again for a two-year hiatus, really. And there's been a lot that's happened this past, I guess, year and a half. And especially when we look at what we've done in terms of the charter amendments and passing 19 charter amendments in four years. That was unprecedented. But yet, we have to take what we've, the citizens really want and then have that be part of the county council to make sure that it gets into action as well as the mayor. So especially some, for example, the Water Commission, I think, are looking at selection of boards and commissions. Also, when we look at having a separate housing department, which was desperately needed. How do you feel we have progressed or not progressed in terms of really getting our will of the voters in action?
Well, thank you for that question because that's one of the reasons I'm running is I don't see a lot of honoring the voters' will. We are, we still are debating whether or not to fund the Water Authority. And the Water Authority was overwhelmingly popular with the voters last year. We want control of our own water transmission systems. And, you know, it's a public trust. We need to treat it like a public trust. We just got through a proposal from this current council to try to sell out our water transmissions in Kula to venture capitalist company on the mainland. And luckily that died and that was from people coming out, voters and citizens, coming out and saying, this is a bad idea and it's going to raise our water rates 100%. You know, the water rates that the county pays for that one contract, we're going to go from six cents per thousand gallons up to $5.95, almost $6 per thousand gallons. So that would have obligated us for 30 years. That was a really bad idea. When we look at the, and then there was the debate about whether to fund the housing department. I mean, that should not even be a debate. That is the will of the voters and it's in our county charter, which is our constitution. So I don't, I see a lot of things falling through the cracks. We had that charter amendment that where the public recognized that we do need at least one member from every district on a planning commission. That still has not happened, even though there have been multiple times to appoint new people from the different districts. And now we're in a dispute because we don't have a South Maui member. And the Planning Commission is reviewing the South Maui plan. So, you know, when I go to meetings and I watched at the last meeting, last Planning Commission meeting where they addressed the community plan, there were four, five of, maybe half a dozen of us who testified that the Planning Commission should not even be reviewing our community plan until we get a South Maui member that the community wants on that commission. And they gave some lip service to, you know, we should listen to what the people say. And then they went ahead and kept talking about it and making decisions on our community plan. So yeah, we are not getting the respect for the county charter that we deserve as a community. And that's, you know, some of it, it's on the council and some of it's on the administration.
So again, when you look at then the overall cause for this lack of movement, is it because now we have the majority of the representation that is really supporting big business in the county council? Is that a factor into this?
I believe it is. I believe that's one of the factors. I believe having a mayor who's very inexperienced and is not really overseeing the departments. The Planning Department is driving the Planning Commission to continue with these meetings on the South Maui Community Plan. And it's really up to the administration to go, you know, the mayor to tell the Planning Department, hey, stop. We're in violation of the charter right now. And I just talked to an attorney about what's going on with the Boards and Commissions appointments because the meeting's coming up in the council tomorrow morning, which by the way, folks should come out and testify if you, if you have a preference for somebody who's on that list. But the council, in going ahead, they're actually taking illegal steps because of the fact that the charter is in violation. We don't have one member from each district. We have two members from three districts, three different districts. And even though it says no more than two members from any one district, having three districts with two members would keep them. If you add up the nine, that means they couldn't have one from every district. So we're in very, what I would call unchartered territory, except that I've seen a lot of violations of the charter in the past from previous administrations too. And, you know, one good example is the voters voted in the Environmental Protection and Sustainability Division back in 2012. And every mayor ignored it until around 2018 when they decided they wanted to fill that office and get, pull the grants over to that office from OED. So we're, it's, we haven't seen an administration that's willing to look at the charter or even a council is willing to look at the charter and say, hey, we're in violation. We've got to stop and reset. And what happens, the sad thing for the citizens of our community, of our county, is it's the only way to get them to do that is to sue. And it's very expensive. It's very litigious. We don't want to have to sue our government, but there's no other way to get attention onto these violations.
Thank you for that. And again, by the way, our charter is our constitution. So it's the way things are wired in our governance in terms of power distribution, money distribution. So this has a huge impact. So and thank you, Kelly, for what you've done in the past to support those charter amendments. Next is Lucien Denay, and also we have Bruce Douglas and Anne Pecathry also, who will be also part of the interview. So Lucien.
Oh, you're on mute, Lucien.
You're on mute, Lucien.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Kelly, for being here. My question is going to get right back at what you've been referring to, and that's the South Maui Community Plan. You're running for the South Maui seat. You've represented South Maui for six years. You've lived in South Maui, I don't know, 30 something, 40 years.
40 years.
Yes, and this is the blueprint for South Maui's future for the next 20, maybe even the next 30 years. And I know you've attended a lot of the meetings when the Citizens Advisory Committee was considering the policies and the growth boundaries. And if you, if you are elected to the council, do you feel that the council needs to take a hard look at where the plan is right now as it's being re, you know, the version that's being reviewed by the Planning Commission?
I do. Thank you for that question, Lucien. I absolutely do think the council needs to take a hard look. Even before it arrived at the Planning Commission, there was a frightening amount of development that was put in there and it, under residential land use. But it didn't say affordable housing. So there was no stipulation that the 600 acres they put into development would be affordable housing. And if they follow the ordinance to the letter, then it's probably going to be somewhere between 20 and 25% affordable. We don't need that many high-end houses and we don't need vacant houses in South Maui. And so the only check and balance to that amount of development was policies that were put in and they were proposed by the Kihei Community Association, but they were put into the, the community plan that stipulated that we had to have correct infrastructure, that there should be an infrastructure study and cost estimate before they go ahead with this development. There were, there were checks and balances where it came to other things that are part of the infrastructure that people don't even know about, like wetlands. You know, we have about, what do I want to say? Less than 25% up, less than, less than 10% of the wetlands left that we once had here. And so we're trying to protect and restore those. All of that is part of the infrastructure, the roads, the wetlands, the, you know, even, even our beaches and what's happening with our coral reefs. And so if we don't get a handle on what we need in terms of roadways and even looking at multimodal transportation, we're going to be building upon a community that already doesn't have adequate infrastructure. So my worry and my big concern with the Planning Commission is that they're going to, they're already starting to talk about weakening the language in the community plan, the required, changing requirement to, or required to encouraged. And if you're telling a developer that he's required to do something before he can build a development and something that's needed by the community and all of a sudden you're saying should be encouraged, that, that doesn't even need to be in there because that's just basically just taking the policy completely out. And, and, and I think you might have been the one that said this to the Planning Commission is we're constantly hearing from developers, we need clearer language so we know what's expected of us. Well, we're giving them very clear language and now they're asking to take that out and weaken it. When I was on the State Board of Education, we used to call those weasel words. Whenever somebody proposed to weaken language so that a requirement was taken out and there was a suggested, suggested requirement. But one of the things I'm very proud about the community plan system is when I, when I first came on the council back in 2017, I was chairing the Planning Committee. We went right into completing the Molokai Community Plan, which had been set aside for a decade or longer by my predecessors. And so being able to oversee that process of that, that community plan, the most important thing that we did was to take out that, that statement in the community plan that said that the community plans are just guidelines and are not regulatory. Because these are plans that we, the council accepts into ordinance and that makes them the law. That means they are regulatory. They are not just suggested guidelines. And that was the point right around that period of time. You know, from that term to the next term when we got a majority of progressive council members was when we actually started treating community plans like the law, you know, as if they were the law. And I think that's why so many developers are involved right now because they know community plans have become more and more important to the community and more people are aware and the council is following the community plans. And so they're trying to weaken our community plan. So that's, you know, that's been extremely frustrating to watch. We don't have a full complement of members on the Planning Commission. Even without the South Maui member, there's still two other vacancies. So we have a bare quorum and it's been really frustrating to see the, my community come out and testify on issues and even be asked questions, but have them go ahead and make decisions that are not in our best interest. I mean, one of the things that the CPAC had, the Community Plan Advisory Committee, before they sent the, they finished the community plan office, they had made a requirement for the infrastructure study and for the cost estimate. And they had asked that the plan go first go to the South Maui Advisory Committee. So both of those, those things were accepted by the Planning Department and then roundly ignored once they finished at the CPAC and it got, it got forwarded to the Planning Commission.
I think we really need someone on the council with your background. So I'm very, very glad that you're running and I think your community is going to have a very clear choice about who knows what's going on there.
Thank you.
I'm going to pass the baton over to Anne, I believe. Yes?
Actually, we'll go with Bruce and then we'll go with Anne. Yep, okay.
Yes, Kelly. You know, the sign of a real statesperson isn't just what they sit there and vote on, but what bills you champion, that you write, that you draft, that you go through the process of making and put on board. During your first year, you get re-elected into the council. During your first year, what would be three important pieces of legislation that you'd want to champion and see through to completion?
Oh, so coming up, well, there's, you know, I want, well, first would be the community plan. And I think we need to go through that with a fine tooth comb, depending on how the Planning Commission, what they pull out of there and what they keep in. That needs to be gone over again so that we make sure that the original wishes of the community are in that plan. So that's one of the first things that I think, and that's a, that's a huge job. And it's one that, that really needs a lot of encouragement from the community to come out and participate in. And I don't feel like there was a lot of encouragement even at the CPAC level. We, you know, I went to those meetings and there'd be a handful of citizens. So maybe it's the timing and maybe it's the access. You know, sometimes we had virtual participation, sometimes we didn't. Sometimes it moved around from place to place. So that's one of my first concerns. One of the things I would like to put into ordinance that I had started and that fell apart after I left was the Youth Council. And we had, we had such a beautiful experimental youth council that I was intending to have become an annual event where for nine to 10 months, we identified a cohort of high school students. We trained them and I had Axel Beers in my office, who is a teacher and who also is a journalist. But he worked with these students for nine to 10 months on how to identify important issues in our community, how to research them, write proposals, deliberate. And then we sat these students, we picked one from each district to sit in our seats as the Youth Council for a day, give their proposals or resolutions, deliberate on them, vote on them and pass them on to the county council, once they passed out of the Youth Council. But the, the potential for leadership for our youth with this kind of activity is enormous. When I walked into that room, when they were rehearsing on the day they sat in the chambers, not a single one of them looked nervous. It was the most beautiful thing to see. I, they looked like they belonged there. And after we went through the whole exercise of their deliberations and their votes and, you know, they were sitting and they had picked a chair and a vice chair. After all of that, I asked all of them, how many of you would want to run for office now? Every hand went up. So, you know, these kinds of exercises, they're not just, they're not just feel-good exercises. They're a prelude to developing our next level of leadership. And I think that's one of the most important things that needs to continue to happen. So I'm going to push for that. I do want to, I do want to make reviews, regular reviews of the legislation that we passed when I was in office last, the Wetland Restoration and Preservation. The, well, the sunscreen ban seems to be moving along well. That seems to be one of the things that the, the community got on board with and even the tourism industry is, is embracing. One of the other things I'd like to follow up on and take a look at whether we need additional legislation on is the single-use plastic ban. We still have a lot of plastic in our community. What we, what we need to get to is having more water refill stations. So eventually we can ban plastic water bottles. Everybody should be, I mean, there are enough flasks probably in my kitchen to hand out one to five dozen people. So it's not like we don't have enough tools to eliminate that huge influx of plastic. But, but the other, one of the biggest issues I think that we need to look at and I don't know exactly what legislation, but I want to push the resilience hubs because we need to be better prepared. We have, this is not, the fire is not going to be the last disaster, climate disaster we have. And we need to be prepared for, for, in fire prevention, in drainage. You know, the drainage systems in South Maui, after we lost the wetlands, have been what's causing all the flooding. And the water is not allowed to travel downhill to the ocean as nature would have it because it's got all the development in the way. So we see areas where brims have gone up and diverted the water horizontally, you know, in parallel with the ocean when it's supposed to be going straight down to the ocean. So there are a lot of issues to follow up on. There are a lot of new projects to follow up on. The homeless issue is, or houseless issue is a big. I thought I had been on the way to solving their first problem, which I was told by Sheri Urmanna that the first issue, the biggest issue was they needed immediately someplace to sleep in their cars. And so that's what I did in my last term on the council. And that was totally screwed up by the administration. So that never happened. But there's a lot of, there's, there's issues that we, we can pass legislation on and policies on. And if the administration doesn't take them up, then that's when the council needs to really follow up and make sure that they follow the law.
Thank you, Kelly. With that, I will pass it to Anne.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi.
I want to thank you, I want to thank you for that, I think you had a hand in it, the civic engagement video. I have to refresh my, go back to that. I don't even think the state legislature has something like that, a video tutorial. But they sure need it. So my question is, I know, I recall you were the chair of the Climate Action Resilience and Environment Committee, right?
Right.
We've seen a lot of things like because of, it's no longer just a crisis, housing crisis, but an emergency, that a lot of the things that impact are, that are climate change related are being set aside. I was just from that Honolulu Civil Beat today, they, they had a fund for the, to deal with studying the impacts of climate change and sea level rise. And they paused that for three years because instead they earmarked it for the, I mean, it was earmarked for that and instead they used it instead for this Kulele Hua Housing Project north of Lahaina. And do you see anything urgent issues with climate change that have been set aside in our priority?
Well, some of what's been set aside has been prevention measures that are in reports that made recommendations. And, you know, certainly after the 2018 Lahaina Fire, there was a report that was done and made recommendations for future fire prevention. That was set on a shelf and then we had the big fire last year. And so we're, we're not paying, we have Tina Wildberger, who was our State House Representative for a couple of terms, led the effort for the South Maui Resilience Hub. She did a great job. She got a lot of people involved. They made a big report with recommendations on how to, how to make a more resilient community, how to be prepared for the aftermath of some of these disasters. And that's set on a shelf, you know, so we have, we have work that has been done. And then we keep adding, oh, well, you know, every time someone wants to make a solution, say, well, let's do a report. Well, let's do a study. We have enough studies and reports and we know what's coming down the pike. So, yeah, I, I feel like we're not, we're not paying attention to the signs that are out there. And what we are doing is just letting things pile up until there's a disaster and then we try to figure out what to do after the fact. So there are a lot of things that, and part of what has come out of this disaster that I think is finally starting to be addressed and it's not, it's really thanks to the private sector. And also that we have a new head of Department of Environmental Management, Shane Ogawa, who is much more open to innovation. But there's been proposals for green belts in Lahaina, South Maui and Maalaya. And these are very important preventative measures. But as far as climate change, we had all of the mayors in the state of Hawaii a few years ago make a resolution for, that they're, that they're going to push for renewable transportation. And still not one drop of biodiesel has gone into the bus system on Maui or the, or Kauai. I mean, Kauai is now using it in their utility and Billy Canoy actually had contracts with us for 100% biodiesel in his emergency vehicle. So it was the first time we saw them in ambulances, fire trucks and police cars that were, police trucks that were diesel. Unfortunately, he, he's passed away and then the new mayor who came in just canceled all contracts, including ours. But we're, we're missing the boat because there's a lot of low-hanging fruit that's available now that we could be doing. And some of it's coming from people in our own community and we're ignoring it, you know, the administrations are ignoring it. So what scares me and it's happening at all levels, the state level and the federal level, is that what the politicians are paying attention to are the lobbyists, you know, the issues that the lobbyists have, that the big money, that's the issues that the lobbyists have, that the big money that's coming into their campaigns have. And we're not paying attention to the intelligence in the room. There's a lot of intelligent people here who understand climate change, who understand renewable energy, who understand that we need a flexible diversified energy portfolio. And we keep hearing, now, now we've got a proposal from our governor to bring LNG into the state, which would be totally going backwards. So I don't know if he doesn't understand that LNG is still fossil fuel. But to put $1.5 billion into a 30-year contract with a fossil fuel company, when in 20 years, we're supposed to be having zero fossil fuels on our grid. I mean, it's just some of the, the, I don't know where that thought process comes from.
Help. Yeah, wow. Okay, yeah, we need, yeah, it's, and then, you know, with the housing, it's just, it's taking priority. I understand that. We have a housing emergency. So.
But I don't know that even the housing emergency, I don't know that they're addressing that properly.
Right.
To, to, to say, well, it's the permit process that's holding everything up. Let's just let everybody build willy-nilly without a permit is really frightening because we're going to get some really bad projects along with a few really good ones that way. So there has to be a better thought process put into these proposals.
So you're saying they want to streamline permits, so.
That's, we keep hearing that out of the, the, our state government is, you know, and, and you hear a lot of politicians say that at the county level, that it's the permits, that the permit process is so slow and that's what's holding up housing. Well, I, I had, and I think I proved out my theory that it's not necessarily the permit process. It's the developers needing to work with the communities. Because once you, you develop a project that's acceptable, that the community likes, they will be behind you and they won't be taking you to court and intervening and protesting. And we saw that with the two affordable, affordable rental projects that I brought into South Maui, the Kaiwahine Village. And I can't remember the name of the other one, it's over by the golf course off of Lopoa. Is, you know, I worked with that developer. I pushed him in the direction of meeting with our community association, with our advisory committee, walk the neighborhood. He did all those things and he had nothing but support for both of those projects. They flew through, it was two years from, from the time he bought Kaiwahine Village project, which was, the previous developer had gone bankrupt, to the time that people moved in was about two years. And he said to me, wow, it takes a long time to get a project through on Maui. And I said, are you kidding me? Two years? That's breakneck speed. Nobody does that. But it was because he worked with the community and we don't see a lot of developers doing that. We see them trying to force projects on our community and ignoring things like the water usage or the drainage or the cultural significant, you know, sites. And, and trying to sweep a lot of things under the rug. So we, the council has not done a good job of holding developers to the conditions. And if you look at the conditions of a place like, like Wailea 670, those conditions have not been met. At some point, they, that, that project's been on the books for over 30 years, I think. At some point, it should have been just ended. And if you want to come back and start all over again, do these things first and then come back to us for a permit. But we never do that. These, they, these projects drag on and on. They take a lot of our time and energy fighting them because they're not doing the right thing, instead of working with the community and saying, what can we do to make this acceptable to the community? That's what I think is going to help affordable housing move through faster.
Right. Were you, is 670, is that lead court? Is that lead court?
No, that's a project that's been on the books for like 30 years from the Charlie Jane stays.
Okay. I mean, you just keep, I keep hearing that there's not enough staff in the permit department to process that in, in a timely manner. But I don't know.
Well, that, the, the, the processing of permits has been an issue probably since the dawn of time. That's all I hear politicians talking about. But, you know, the fact that we were able to get some projects through really quickly by working with the community, I think shows the importance of the, the community buy-in.
Great. So, so I, I will get the next question. And this is going to be the last question that each of the interviewers will do in this round. So my question has to do again with implementation of things that should have been done a long time ago. It has to do with injection wells and our septic system, especially in Kihei, especially around the area of the cove, where there's not a lot of, you know, it's a shallow area, so it's not flushed out a lot. So, I mean, I personally smell septic there, you know, at times. So I'm, what, what are your thoughts and what can be done? And what has been preventing us from going past this injection well issue that is affecting our reefs?
Well, it's, it started to happen when we, when we did the settlement agreement on the Lahaina injection well case. And, and the may, despite the fact that the mayor held that up by not signing that agreement and making it go to the Supreme Court. I mean, we were so lucky that the Supreme Court upheld the rights of the citizens of Maui to have clean ocean water. Because if they had, if they had gone in favor of the county and shot down the settlement agreement, that would have affected clean water issues across the country. So everybody was watching this. I mean, I was getting calls. I was chairing the council that year and I was getting calls from Bloomberg Environmental, from reporters from Al Jazeera. I mean, this was really the, the attack on the people who were trying to close down those injection wells. The attack that the county did on the Hawaii Wildlife Fund, Sierra Club, the Surf Rider Group, was, was, was watched closely by environmentalists around the country. So, excuse me. But the problem with implementation is that that's supposed to be the administration side. And if you read the county charter, you'll see under the description of the council, it says in there that the council member, council members may not direct the actions of any administrative employees and that, that this is an impeachable offense. So you can't go around telling the departments, you have to do this or that. But you can call them into a meeting and you can say, okay, here's the law, but here's what's happening. Can you explain this? And that's what I spent a lot of time doing and I will probably spend a lot more time doing, you know, in my next term, is holding their feet to the fire.
Thank, thank you, Kelly, because that's exactly what we need. We need more accountability and then enacting the will of the people, as we talked about with the charter amendments and other issues. So, so thank you for that. And Lucie Anne, you're next. This is your last question. You're on mute.
Yeah. Yes, Kelly. A little bit earlier, you also referred to a, a proposal that the council was considering, I think on a fast-track basis, to pay a lot of money to some people who had never built a private water system before or a private solar generating plant before. And they were going to have the expertise to set both of these up and provide the county with energy to pump wells that produce water for up-country, but very expensive water. And the ratepayers were extremely concerned. And it seemed like most of the meetings that people attended, what they were asking for was a more nature-based type of system, where we don't discard stormwater, where we reuse wastewater, you know, give it to, to, to life cycles after cleaning it up. And we, we're a long way from doing that. So I'm just wondering, you know, as a consul person, whose district is, you know, looking for water from other sources, there are a number of private systems being proposed in South Maui right now to serve, you know, just one development, not necessarily to sell water to the county. But do you feel that there's anything that the council should be doing to have more oversight over, having the county have the ability to have its own land for wells and its own land for storage facilities? I think, I think they're held back a lot because when you look at the ownership map of our island and you look at county-owned lands, very, very tiny percentage. And the large landowners own most of the places that you might want to do one of these things. So do you have any ideas on what you would do as a consul person to try to convene the best ideas? There's a lot of ideas in the community right now, but to try to convene those best ideas and help give some direction and funding to the water department to, to make some things happen that I think citizens could feel were viable and where the pricing would be, you know, fair for the future.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons why those of us who supported the water authority going on the ballot as a charter amendment was so important because, because most, I haven't talked to anybody who thinks it's a good idea to sell out our water system. You know, we, the water, water all across the county is a public trust, so it belongs to all of us. And what's the problem has been with the water transmission, the systems that, that own the way that we get the water. And they're allowed to charge various rates. I mean, Waileku Water charges us 30 cents more per thousand gallons than our neighbor, Bobby Pahia, you know. So they, they can just decide what you're going to pay and charge you that. That's not right. But as a, as a council, what we need to do is give that water authority funding so that they can start having these discussions, because these are public discussions. It should be had in public, the, the idea of, of water storage. I mean, I've been talking about water storage, storm, stormwater storage for a long time because we've known for, you know, we've been told in the past, we have enough water on the island. It's just not where we need it to be when we need it to be there. So we're not, and we're not, and we have a lot of water that comes down during the storm times. And then other times we're in a drought and that water's all, all gone because we haven't, we haven't saved it. So eminent domain is one way to be able to get, get property that belongs to large landowners, if it's in the best use, interest of the public to have it for water storage or, or drill wells. We need to work more closely with those entities that are drilling wells because it's still the water table. You know, they may own the land that they're drilling in, but all the water underneath that doesn't belong to them. So that needs to be made clear. And that was the intent of having a water authority, to make those issues clear, to protect the public trust. And I will put everything I have into funding that water authority and, and keeping people like Jonathan Schoyer on it. I mean, I think he's one of the most brilliant people that we, we, we're so lucky to have him on that water authority. But we need to have people that are going to be thoughtful and inclusive. And we need to be able to talk about the, the various, people from the various districts need to be able to come out and talk about our needs and what we want and who we want seeing, running our water transmission. And it's, it should never be someone from the mainland. I mean, we're trying to get away from it even being a Hawaii corporation. We want it to belong to the public. So my, my answer to you is that I, I absolutely believe everything you said, that we need to do those things. And the way we're going to get them done, I think, is through supporting the water authority and expanding it to, because that was the intent, that first it would be East Maui irrigation that would be, would be looked at. And the water authority was a way to start bidding, bid on that, that, that ditch system, which the previous mayor would not do. And, and then eventually we would look at Waileku Water System, any of those, those private water systems that are delivering water to people that are, have varying degrees of fairness and of, of usage. So I, I'm personally involved in seeing, you know, some of the water being dumped through our property below Waileku Water when it wasn't needed, because they didn't want to lose the allocation from the Commission on Water Resource Management. And so rather than saying, oh, we don't need that much water, they just open the, you know, open the spigot and let it run down the hill into Kaila Pond. And so those are the things that need to be stopped. We need to have honest discussions about where the water is, who's running these transmissions, and is that fair to the general public?
Thank you.
Bruce, Bruce, you're on mute.
Yes, Kelly. The recent fires have exacerbated ongoing issue of affordable rents, affordable housing. You know, not just rentals, but affordable houses that people can buy. If you're elected, what type of legislative action do you see you would work toward in order to solve our housing, affordable house and affordable housing situation?
Well, I would continue the work I've been doing and working with developers and, and the communities and making sure there's that communication. But I also would like to see our affordable, the council's Affordable Housing Committee go back under someone like Gabe Johnson, who was progressing, you know, we, we, we put out an RFP for an affordable housing plan. We had Jeff Gelberth from Community, Hawaii Community Assets, won that bid and wrote a plan. And there were some, you know, I didn't agree with all parts of it, but there's some very good parts of that plan that we had started going through when Gabe Johnson was the head of the Affordable Housing Committee. One of the really important components of it was putting together a list that people could put their names on that were longtime residents. And so that when affordable housing projects came up, they got notified first. The people who live here and who have had longtime residency would get notified first. And we, you know, we passed the ordinance for that list. And then after I left the council, nothing was ever done with that, to follow up with that list. When the council changed composition, we didn't have enough of the political will, I think, to keep that, that going. But it, it's a very hard, it's a very difficult thing to, to produce housing and then make sure it goes to local residents and that it doesn't come to people who have just moved here or even people that move here for affordable housing. So one of the things that we did when, when I was working with Doug Bigley on the Kaiwahine, the affordable rentals up at the Kaiwahine Village, is we, we said that you, you have, in order to pick up an applicant, in order to get an application for that, that lottery, you had to come there in person. And you could only pick up a form for yourself. You couldn't pick up one for your friend in California or your friend in, in, on the East Coast. And so there are ways that, there are ways that, that the process can be, can be developed so that it, it makes sure that we're addressing our, our local needs first. But, you know, the, really the, the bottom line is that we need to identify those developers who have been doing 100% affordable units, affordable projects and get those done. And look at the ones who have promised them and nothing's happened. Now, I'm very upset that the Pulele Hua project in Lahaina got $18 million when I was last on the council, hasn't done a thing and then came back for another, what, 50 million? We, we need to hold these developers to what they say they're going to do. And if they're not, we need to have other developers waiting in the wings. Because I, I think we have as many proposals that have gone nowhere as we have proposals that have actually happened, you know, for affordable housing. But I'd like to be able to go through that, that plan, finish the parts of that plan that are going to move things along in the right way, because it was done very thoughtfully. Jeff Gelberth is one of the, you know, one of the most active people in affordable housing in the state. But it, it kind of just fell apart when the composition of the council went, went conservative. So we, what we don't want, and I, I hate talking about what we don't want because, because we, we should be focusing on the solutions. But what we don't want is these projects where 80% are high-end and 20% are affordable. And even most of those 20% are not really affordable. So, you know, most people can't afford 5, 6, 700,000 and that's being called affordable right now. So we need to go back to what is truly affordable and hold out for the developers that are willing to do that. Because there, there are the, there are, in fact, I just met with one today who was proposing a, not tiny home, but a small home project, prefab project, where the homes would be $100,000. And so it's doable. There are people out there that have proposals and we need to elevate those types of proposals. But we also need to integrate them into the community so they don't get a lot of pushback when, when they come into the community. And that's the, that's the solution to me. That's what makes projects go through quicker, is when the community is on your side.
And what happened to the ordinance proposal, like, you know, you had worked on about allowing people to sleep in their cars?
Oh, yeah, we, we got that into the budget. And one of the stipulations in that budget item was that the, the, whoever, you know, whoever won that bid for that project had to, if it wasn't Sheri Umana, had to work with Sheri Umana on, on, consult with them on where to put the project. That did not happen. So Mayor Victorino at the time decided he was just going to go ahead and put it at the Cameron Center without talking to any of the homeless community. And it's, you know, the Cameron Center with the parking, part of the parking lot where they wanted to put it backed up right to the, the police station. Well, no homeless person wants to be in their car that's probably not legal, probably doesn't have a safe, an up-to-date safety check. They don't want to be next to the police station. And that's what, that's why we put in there to consult with Sheri Umana, because that organization knows what the homeless people need. And I had. And I had met with them um to to ask them to apply for the money and I was hoping that they would, but. Before they could even get a chance to apply, the mayor just took it and decided he was going to push it through. And I, you know, personally, I believe it was a. An election year stunt because it happened in October and the election was in November, but the whole thing fell apart and then. And then we couldn't get and then the head of um the Department of Housing and Human Concerns. Uh, it was not a priority for her and she just she just kind of basically tossed the whole proposal in the trash. So that's one that we need to follow up on and, you know, there's a potential project in Kihei. Called Eco Village that may include a parking lot that, you know, where people can sleep overnight, but. Um, I wanted to see that happen because when I met with the groups of homeless people that I met with or healthless people. Um, that was what I was told was their biggest need. Was someplace to get a good night's sleep and they're living in their car and they don't want to keep getting moved down the road because some of them work, their kids go to school, they need a good night's sleep.
Hey, thank you, and I'll pass it on.
Yeah, hi Kelly. So. Is it my turn?
Yes.
I was at a re- I I watched a recent council meeting about. Um, I can't remember the name of it, but it's um Waikapu Ventures there and they talked about. Deed addressing deed restrictions and. Some of the council members were saying, well, deed restrictions are kind of a bad idea because. Really want to give a a leg up to these people and then give them a chance to pop profit up. Their home. And so no more than ten year deed restriction, right? I think what was proposed proposed was like thirty. And what's your position on deed restriction? I mean, I think their county subsidized homes some degree and. Affordable housing, hopefully they're for local residents. But what, how do you feel about deed restrictions?
I was always in favor of the longest deed restriction we could get because what happens after ten, ten years goes by fast. And we could lose whole developments um out of affordable housing after that ten years passes. What we would like to see is people who are getting into these homes because they want to live there for a while and I don't have a problem with somebody making some. You know, percentage of profit af- after a period of time off of a home that they've lived in and improved. But we need to have some kind of a. Some kind, and we've talked about this in the past, it just never came to the Affordable Housing Committee in the form of a proposal, but. What we need to look at is a a payback. You know, like if you're getting, if you're getting a home for, say, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is 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 basically winning the lottery. I mean, you do have to go through the lottery for these things and and if you're able to walk in, turn the key and a few years later sell it for seven hundred thousand, that's not right. So there, yeah, so there've been proposals that have not passed, but we've that we've looked at in the past and maybe we should take another look at that. Give a certain amount of equity per year. Um, assuming that the house is going to increase in value because you don't want to. Give equity and then end up getting less for the back for the county than you than you paid for in the first place. You know, as far as the subsidies on these projects. So there's a way to do it that makes it fair. But it should not be blanket ten years because um we have to do. We have to do three times as much affordable housing projects if we're going to give them up after ten years.
Yeah, it seemed like there'd be a lot of loss of inventory if that happened. And then do you believe that or agree with the county buying that property back? If within that period if they sell?
Well, I think we should be allowed to buy it back for um for either what we put into it or less. Because um if you look at, if someone lives in a house for three years and decides to sell it. Giving the house back to the county for that same amount of money. Is not really fair because if you think about, had you rented a house for three years, how much would you be out every month for rent? And now you're going to recoup all of that as profit. So there's got to be a way to sit down and and figure out what is actually fair, what will keep the. Affordable Housing Fund full at the, you know, in the county budget so that we have money there for the next person. And especially when we're giving out, you know, things like um free money for down payments on on houses, we we it's a very good down payment. Um, program that we have to help to assist home buyers. But um it doesn't ever get, that money doesn't ever get paid back once that house is bought. So. That that money just has to get allocated every year and then dissipates every year. So there's got to be some way for people, once they're on their feet, making some money. And, you know, their house is going up in value to pay that pay back into those funds. And, you know, it's, I don't know if that's pay it forward or pay it backwards, but you know, put the money, replenish those funds that have helped them. And, you know, I did that, my husband and I did that. We were on a federal program that was affordable housing. We um we built onto our house, which was not allowed. So after three years, we had to pay back the entire amount of the subsidy that we had gotten for that three years. Which we did, we just, we went down to the bank, we got a loan, we paid it back. We're still in our house, we're after forty years, you know, so we 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 what we need to look at is. You know, can we get people into homes that they want to live in that they're not into turn turnover in in five or ten years? Um, we're trying to give affordable housing to people who want to stay here on Maui. And they should, they should, you know, and and you can build onto it and maybe there's some some assistance for that, but. Um, we want housing for people. We don't want the housing, affordable housing to be looked at as an investment. We want it to be looked at as home.
Exactly. So, oh, yeah, I heard that Hawaii has something like a forty year deed restriction on affordable housing. That that that's like, that's a long time.
Yeah.
Unless you're you're yourself. Live for forty years. But uh, yeah, got to be a balance somewhere.
So so thank you for that question, Ann, and and uh we're at an end. We've been going for one hour. So again, we've we've reached our time limit. Uh, and thank you again, Kelly. I we obviously could keep this conversation going on for quite some time because you're so. Knowledgeable, you have such great insights, but also you bring to the table so many different types of solutions that I think our community needs. So. Again, thank you for running. And uh again, for those of you who are tuning in still at this time. We have our ongoing interviews that we'll be doing for the Maui Pono Network. This is all for the twenty twenty four candidates that are running from Maui County. So please tune into us and become.
And remember. And remember, everybody in the county can vote for all the council members.
Thank you for bringing that up because uh again, even though there are different county council members that represent different districts. Again, all nine county council members are up for your vote. So uh again, uh. Be selective, be informed as you go forward. Please listen to the interviews so that you really get an understanding of where the candidates truly lie.
People need to vote in the primary that's coming up in August. This race has multiple people running in it. If you just think, oh, I need to vote in this in November, I don't need to vote in August. You're not going to be uh participating in who the representatives. For South Maui, the finalists are. You really need to participate. In in both the primary and the general election, especially for for this seat.
Yeah, it's interesting, Lucie Anne, just my last thought, because I know we're over time, is that the two races that have a primary. Those two council members who are incumbents were the ones that led the charge. On the the contract for the free market ventures to take over our water system in Kula. So those are the two, those are really important races. We really want to make sure we get more progressive people in there. They're going to be responsible. I want to return the council back to the people's council.
That's it. And and thank you for that final statement, Kelly. Uh, appreciate it. Uh, so. Bruce? Aloha.
Aloha.
Thank you, Kelly.
And thank you.
Thank you, Lucian and and Bruce.